The pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 28th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he could help you with that. With that, we will move on to routine business. Item number one, consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meeting and the joint meetings for the county City of Del Rapids meetings from July 21st, 2015.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $469,989.12. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills. Second.
Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, today's bills include a $172,000 transfer to 911, $83,001 contract for a highway department. We had six individual bills of $420 towards people's electric bills. $420 is the maximum our human services department will pay, but we had six of those today.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, there are none. Item number five is personnel. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
There is.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special commission action to approve temporary additional pay duty pay.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. This is a request to give Carrie Benz, who's acting as the interim human services director, 10% temporary additional duty pay while that vacancy occurs. And it's only limited until a new appointment is made. This is consistent with what you've done for past interim directors.
Are there any questions for Carrie on that special action?
Move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the special action on additional duty pay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item C is a special commission action to establish a new classification of land surveyor.
On this one, we'd like to, or DJ Boothie is here to go ahead and answer any questions, but he'd like to convert his project engineer vacancy into a land surveyor. Budget neutral, they're both a pay grade 19. I think I can elaborate.
Okay.
Good morning. Commissioners, DJ Boothie, Highway Superintendent. In the briefing memo, we outlined four reasons we'd like to do this. Just a quick summary, we will see a cost savings of having a professional land surveyor on staff and not having to subcontract a lot of that work out with consultants, increase compliance with the laws, and increase credibility, kind of go hand in hand with a professional licensier on staff. We'd be able to perform more of the work that's required by the South Dakota codified law and ensure that we're complying with those laws. Improvements in daily operations, one of the examples that was given in the briefing memo was just some simple staking operations by our surveying department and being able to complete those for our staff and staking out right away for our road maintenance team and their tree removal operations. And so, we would like to transfer or change the pay grade, or not the pay grade, the title of the project engineering position to the land surveyor. Like Carrie said, it's budget neutral and it will improve our operations.
Is there any questions for DJ? Commissioner Kelly?
Are we authorizing a new position?
This is an existing FTE.
You're just changing his description.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennigan?
DJ, what did we spend in fees for surveyors last year for the?
I don't have the exact dollar amount for fees for land surveying. For engineering, it was several hundred thousand dollars and a portion of that is surveying. There will still be some surveying expenses, but for specific land surveying expenses, I don't have a dollar amount. It would have been tens of thousands of dollars, maybe a hundred thousand dollars. Moving forward, an important thing to note is as we go into corridor type projects where we are doing a reconstruction project, a lot of the work the year or two ahead of the project under construction will be verifying right away, getting H-plats completed for work that had been done 30 or 40 years ago and the H-plats weren't filed properly. And so, we have to redo a lot of those. We've identified several of those corridors already and we'll have to work to get those done before we do a reconstruction project in the future. And so, a lot of this position, we'll be working towards those corridor projects. And so, we won't have to hire a consultant to do those large projects.
Is there any concern about frankly, having our own internal land surveyor and being sued for that particular transaction versus having a consultant do it for us?
We're assuming a little bit of a risk, but that's why we have a professional on staff and there's that licensure requirement. With the work of a professional, we're confident that we're going to be doing it right and correct.
Any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
So DJ, our employee under your supervision has gotten additional training to become a certified surveyor and this is just recognizing that in a way.
There's two different FTEs that we have. One of them is an engineering technician position and that's where this employee is that you're talking about right now. He did gain his license recently. And then, this is a different vacant position that we have that we're reclassifying. And we're hoping that this employee will apply for this position because he will qualify, meet the minimum requirements for it. With our recruiting process, we'll be advertising for it and we hope that he applies, but it's going to be up to him to apply for it.
At this point, this is just a reclassification of a position. DJ, when you reclassify, will the project engineer vacancy completely go away?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Is there any other questions?
It will turn into a land surveyor vacancies.
Correct. Yes. Are there any other questions on this change? Okay. I need a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to reclassify a project engineer position into a land surveyor position. This is not a filled position, this is just a reclassification. Are there any additional questions?
Have we established pay grade and everything?
Yes, it's the same, it's the exact same pay grade. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number six is applications for abatement, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice from the city of Sioux Falls of a public meeting of the city planning commission at 6:00 PM August 5th, 2015 at the Carnegie Town Hall, 235 West 10th Street. Agenda will include proposed consideration of a tax increment district for a project referred to as Washington Square at the 12th Street and Main Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Item number B is the first reading of the Minnehaha County Ordinance, MC number 47-15, an ordinance for permitting requirements for utilities crossing highways under Minnehaha County jurisdiction. This ordinance shall have a second hearing and be considered at a public hearing at 9:00 AM at the regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission on August 4th, 2015. Item eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine is compromise of lien, there are none.
Can I ask a question back on the TIF?
Yep.
Do we have any idea what kind of agreement they've come to with Washington Square? I know there was some argument about how much the TIF was going to be and how long it was going to be.
Commissioner Robert Wilson with the commission office. Short answer is no. We have not been privy to any additional information beyond the notice that was provided and that we have been included, that we've included on your agenda here.
Next item is opportunity for public comment. This is a time where if you have something to speak to that is not on the agenda, seeing none, we will move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign a maintenance agreement between Minnehaha County and the New World. Monty Wadimbach, good morning, Monty.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wadimbach, Minnehaha County IT Department. The agreement that we had with New World, that kind of spelled out the terms and conditions and increase in prices of that maintenance has expired. And we have negotiated a new one-year agreement and I would recommend signing that.
Any questions on New World agreement?
Move for approval. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 11 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign amendment number six to the food service contract between Minnehaha County and CBM Management Services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Gromer, the warden at the jail. I'm just bringing the latest contract amendment between CBM and the county to you for approval. This is a increase in the per meal cost to the county due to the loss of the DOC trustees that we had been housing out at the correction center. Couple of quick points to clarify in the briefing memo. One, this expenditure was added into the 2016 budget, so that's budgeted already into that budget. And secondly, the initial paragraph of the briefing memo, this was an independent DOC decision to move those inmates out. It was not done through an overcrowding issue with the jail. So, that was a DOC decision to move those inmates out. We obviously worked with them to get that accomplished and get the contract in place. But, the cost of the contract, 16 cents per meal, that's due to the increased labor costs that CBM will have to assume to meet our needs.
Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 12 is a briefing on the activities and events for the 76th Annual Sioux Empire Fair at the WH Lions Fairground.
Good morning, Commissioner Scott Wick with the Sioux Empire Fair. First of all, on behalf of the board of directors, my staff and myself, we'd like to thank you for your continued support of the WH Lions Fairgrounds and all the activities out there. In the commission office, I've dropped off your commission fair survival pack. You guys have a water bottle, you have canned koozies, parking passes, tickets to the fair, and a hat. And we also have our schedule that's in this Z-fold that has all nine days of the fair. We kick off this Friday at 5:00 PM with a sneak peek, which is the carnival and all the food. And then, all the activities are underway starting Saturday with 4H rodeo, the midway. We have concerts starting on Saturday and all the other activities, the 4H exhibits will be up and running as well, all the way through Sunday, July 9th. A couple things to note this year, we have every day sponsored, which is the first time that's happened, I believe, in the history of the fairs. We have some very large sponsors that came on board. First weekend is premier weekend, premier bank card, first premier bank, premier bank card. For premier weekend, Monday, we just brought on BillionOnMotive.com for customer appreciation day and they have bought out the gate. So, Monday is all free admission, free concerts, and $1 carnival rides all day and all night. So, we're expecting Monday to be a huge, a huge day and a huge night. Speaking of the carnival and a lot of markets, those dollar days tend to be the largest day, whether they're midweek or weekend with 40-some rides and $1 ride a ride, it's pretty amazing. Tuesday is Senior Citizen Day with Grand Falls Casino Golf Resort. Wednesday, Touchstone Energy sponsors for egg appreciation day. Thursday, we just brought on the South Dakota Soybean Research and Promotional Council and they stepped up with very large generous sponsorship. We were able to bring in Lee Bryce, who's usually out of our budget range, but they wanted to make an impact and bring in a really good country artist, so Lee Bryce will be there. He drew 12,000 people up in Fargo and it was a great show. So, hopefully with weather permitting, we'll get, 8 to 10 would be nice, but we'll take 12. Friday and Saturday are sponsored by South Dakota Corn, Corn Utilization Council and it's egg rules days. And Friday, we have, Brett Eldredge is in the grandstand. And then, we finish the last weekend with the PRCA rodeo. So, we encourage everybody to come out. It is free admission till 1:00 PM on the Tuesday through Friday because Monday's all free. Call that our lunch gate. We get a lot of business people come out and eat some fair food and see what there is to see and come back later on. All shows, all activities in the grandstand are free with $7 paid gated admission except for the special day on Monday. So, we think we have a great lineup, good entertainment, good ground entertainment. We've brought in a hypnotist, transformers, just some different things to change it up. So, it's really, we rely on the weather right now, so we're poised for a good show. So, again, thank you for your support. I can answer any questions if anybody has any questions of me.
Any questions for Jeff? Commissioner Kelly?
Scott, the rodeo is on Saturday?
Saturday and Sunday.
Okay. What time?
The rodeo on Saturday is 6:00 to 6:30. I'll have to look at my.
Dick wants to be involved in the bull riding.
I hear so much right here.
He's young, he's young at heart, he can handle those guys.
PRC rodeo is at, oh, she didn't put it.
We might have.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went the wrong time.
Yeah.
It's at 6:30 and it's at 1:30 on Sunday.
Oh, 6:30 on Saturday.
Yeah, 6:30 at Saturday.
And 1:30 on Sunday. And, oh, I lost the other question.
I'd just like to say thank you for all the work that you guys have done the last few years. They've been great fairs. I've been out there every year at least a couple of days and enjoyed myself. It's a great way to spend a weekend or a couple of days during the weekend. If Monday's free, we hope that it is packed and we will cross our fingers for good weather. But, all rain is after midnight and done before 8:00 in the morning.
That's right. Last year, we had four and a half days of rain, which was definitely affected the outcome. That was the poorest weather in 27 years of Mark, my vendor director, really tracking the weather. Yeah, he's been here 27 years, so that, we like to say that's our 100-year flood and we're just going to have 10 great days for a great show.
10, I remember my question.
Commissioner Kelly?
There were, there's some events, I can't, I got my desk, it's a mess. So, there's some events we've been specifically invited to, I believe. Is that?
The 4H has invited us on Thursday night.
Okay, yeah, if Chuck invited you, yeah, I was not aware of that, but I'm sure. You're invited to every event that's out there, you get to come anytime you want.
Yeah.
Are we having a beer tasting contest this year?
You know, we're thinking about doing a Jeff Bart annual brew.
There you go.
You asked me, I think you asked me that every year.
You'll have to raise it by 10% to collect the taxes on it.
Well, let me say that the fair is a great event.
Do you have a beer card?
The fair is a great event. It's got to be the biggest draw in our community during the calendar year and I really expect this year to be the best ever.
Well, we track and measure every event that comes in, you know, we have over 90 events a year, which is unique to the facility. There's only about 10% of county fairs that have events outside the fair. Otherwise, they have a fair, it turns into a big storage unit for boats and campers. So, we operate 52 weeks a year and based on the CVB's formulas, after 15, or after 15, we'll have numbers, but in 2014, we had a $37 million economic impact from all the events that we bring in. Obviously, the fair's the largest, Farm Show is right up there. Now, we're partnered with Rib Fest. Unfortunately, we had bad weather on Friday for Rib Fest. It was like 44 degrees, which wasn't conducive to building a crowd or selling many adult beverages. But, it is South Dakota, so, you know, our biggest moneymakers are 10 days outside for the fair and now four days outside for Rib Fest. So, we work real hard to bring in more indoor events, especially with the expo building.
Any other questions for Scott? All right, thanks for coming down, we'll see you this next week.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks Scott. Item number 13 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and JSA Engineering and Land Surveyors Incorporated in the amount of $286,837 for design services for Highway 149 reconstruction.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothie again, Highway Superintendent. We started this process a couple of months ago for the solicitation of some informal proposals from consultants for the design of a reconstruction project on Highway 149, the road going from Hartford to Colton, beginning in Hartford, going up to Highway 122 is this first phase. We are hoping to design it this year and construct it next year is what we have budgeted. We have budgeted about $5.2 million, or that's projected construction cost, about $5.2 million. And right now, the road is in the poor category as defined by IMS or ZAC, the one that presented on our pavement management system just recently. And this is a really good project for us. It's our first big reconstruction in a long time and so, we're really looking forward to doing this. JSA is a company that we know well and we've done a lot of work with in the past through various projects, specific to Minnehaha County. They worked on a drainage project just east of Highway 15, or Highway 11, South Dakota Highway 11, township road for us. And so, we know them well with working on a lot of other projects before coming over to the county too. So, this contract is $286,837. And if you have any questions more about JSA or the contract itself, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for DJ? DJ, when you reconstruct this road, are they going to be putting the wider shoulders on? I'm assuming this is one that doesn't have shoulders.
It's a pretty narrow road right now with all the overlays that we've had and so, it will be widened. I think right now, what we're looking at is a 24-foot top in between the white lines and then three-foot shoulders on the outside. And we're looking at a different design speed, a design speed of 65 miles per hour. We'll have to run some calculations to see how that comes out with the cost of the grading that will have an impact on. And then, we'll also look at the cost of construction for shoulder widths. And so, our goal is to have a 30-foot top.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
There is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the signing of a contract for new, for design services for Highway 149. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. I do have one more question, would this be next year's 2016 project then?
For construction, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And it was part of the budget amendment that we did this year in order to have the funds to do the design.
Item number 14 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign a change order number one with pram construction for project MC 1550-082-110, representing a decrease in the contract of amount, for the amount of $10,650.10.
In accordance with our purchasing policy, we have to bring all change orders to the county commission. This one is a final change order to close out the actual quantities used out in the field relative to what was bid. And so, the change order is attached for details, but it does come to a decrease of So, we look for your approval on that so we can process the final pay application.
Any questions on this? Move to approve. A motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 15 is consider a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2016 provisional budget for Minnehaha County. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller. About four months ago, department heads started working on their budgets to prepare, to bring to you for 2016. The auditor's office has been working very diligently on preparing revenue projections and looking at expenses that have been ongoing and putting all these forms and packets together for us. As Commissioners, you have made pertinent questions that you've asked, you have delved into budgets, and you have made difficult decisions. At this point, the provisional budget stands at $79,770,112. The provisional budget is supported by revenues that include a 2.43% growth in property taxes due to new construction within the county and a 1.5% CPI adjustment allowed by the property tax limitation statutes in total county property taxes collected. You have a cash applied amount of $4 million. The projected opt-out amount, or the difference, or the amount that you would have is $1.7 million. This budget is an increase of $7.8 million over the 2015 budget, but would point out that the significant difference is the highway department, which includes an increase of $5.4 million. We have everybody here to answer questions today, so any questions that we can answer for you, we'd be more than happy to do so. We will have a hearing on the provisional budget on September 1 at your next, at that meeting, commission meeting.
Okay. Any questions about the provisional budget?
As Carol mentioned, September 1st would be our public hearing and the final budget would be adopted in September.
Correct.
So, up until that point, any changes can be made that we deem necessary, so.
Any other questions? None?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to adopt the FY 2016 provisional budget and I might make a couple comments.
Second.
A motion and a second. Comment from Commissioner Barth?
Well, you know, I'd really like to thank a couple of state representatives that came and observed us during the process. The department heads really were fully cooperative, the auditor and his staff and of course, the commission and the commission office. We all worked pretty hard on this and it's pretty laborious, but this is the end of this phase and I think we've made a good effort here and so, I favor passing it at this time.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a comment?
Well, I think, yeah, I too want to thank the commission staff and the department heads for all they've done. It's been a long road and a tough road. This is a good budget, but it has not solved all our problems. And I think we're going to have to get more and more active, both on a local and a state level with the legislature to find additional sources or some balance in some of the allocations that are going on up there.
Additional questions? Comments?
As you noticed, we only used just over, we used $1.7 million of the opt-out money, which we had approved additional money in the opt-out, which we didn't use. But, I think it is important for the legislators to look at this because if we have to continue to opt-out just to make our budget work, there's a problem with how the system is working in the first place, so.
But, it is important to remind people that we're only using 1.7 of the 4 million, I think, that we approved.
Three and a half.
3.5. Yeah, so we're not.
That would be the only effect on your.
Right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carol. Item number 16 is consider the following resolution for submission to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners for legislative action. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson at the commission office. Two weeks ago, I came before you for a discussion on legislative resolutions that we would, that you as a commission went forward to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners for consideration as part of the association's 2016 legislative. We also took that discussion to department head meetings and got a lot of good feedback. And right at this point, we're here to bring a number of those resolutions back to you for consideration and your decision of which one that you want to, SDACC, for consideration by the resolutions committee. I can tell you that we've got a total of eight resolutions. There were, there were four of them that as I surveyed you individually, there seemed to be a consensus on resolutions that you were interested in. And then, there were another four that individual commissioners brought forward and in this, in this phase of the process, we wrote up all of them and I've got eight of them for your consideration today. I will tell you, there are two of them that after they were written up and distributed for consideration, I got some feedback that this may not be the right, the right time to move forward on those from either the commissioner who brought them forward or from the outside entities. And I'll just list those to begin with. One, one that all of you agreed with, that seemed to have a bit of a consensus on, was there is currently a sunset provision in state funding for, a portion of the state funding for 911 centers. And that sunset provision is scheduled to take effect in, I believe, 2018. And speaking with Director Darren Ketchum of Metro 911, he has asked that that be deferred, maybe considered at a later date because that is something that the 911 association statewide is looking to consider at a later time. And if you have any questions or would like to hear from Darren on that particular issue, I would certainly say he is available to talk. issue, I would certainly say he is available to, to talk. But that is, that is one that after your request to include it, that was the feedback that I did get from, from Director Ketchum.
I'd like to hear from Darren.
Okay.
Good morning Commissioners, Darren Ketchum, Metro Communications. I talked a little bit with Robert about this bill or this proposal. And in talking with our statewide association and also the 911 Coordination Board, there's three legislative sessions to, to come up before the sunset would go into place. We feel that waiting at least one more year would be better, will have a better understanding of the 911 environment at that time. Right now, only one PSAP has transitioned to the new 911 system. So we feel that waiting an additional year will provide us additional information and allow us to put together a better coalition.
Thank you, Darren. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, the only concern I have is if, if we don't take it up in 16, we go to 17 and it fails, we're really in trouble then. Well, it sunsets on January 1, 18, right?
July 1, 2018.
July 1, 18. Oh, so we got the eight.
Yeah, we have three sessions.
17, okay, okay. Well, that.
And that was what they had talked about, too, is you have 17 and you can fall back if something were to happen in 18. But statewide, there's a lot of support for this. It's just making sure that we only go forward at one time with a proposal. I'd hate to go forward with a proposal this year and create some, you know, some opposition. You know, this is a bill that, when it passed a few years back, I think only had two no votes from the House and the Senate. And so it's got wide, statewide support. And so I think if we wait and we can put together that, you know, that good group of people, again, we'll see the same, same results.
Are you working on it now, though?
We're talking about it statewide.
Are you talking to legislators?
Not individually. You know, when I see legislators, we bring it up a little bit, but right now, everybody's focus is on the statewide next generation 911 project with Rapid City went online with that, I think around June 1, NMA, early part of June. We're scheduled to do some of that here in September. So all the legislators that I've talked with, their focus is, okay, we've increased the fee, we've created some revenue, now we've purchased this fairly expensive next generation system. We have it in one place. Let's continue our efforts to make sure that it gets implemented appropriately across South Dakota before we start thinking about what we do next. But I think it's out there, it's in the peripheral, it's just not, there's only so much time and people aren't dedicating a lot of effort at this point. But it is in the peripheral of many people's minds.
Well, I agree with you, you don't, but don't be afraid, you have to do it twice. You've identified at least your opposition. But I, I think the groundwork has to be laid with the people that are going to make the decision now, so that when it does come, you've got a pretty hard count of where you're at.
Yeah, and obviously, we're, we're watching the legislature. The change of the legislature will certainly change from the 2016 session to the 2017 session, even the 2018 session, so.
About a third.
Yep. So as we look at those things, you know, obviously, the partners we have may change a little bit, but there will be some familiar faces as we go forward with this. You know, making sure that we have the administration's support as well. I think, you know, through the process, they, they carry quite a bit of weight, and that's kind of the stance from the administration in PIR, too, is let's, let's get part of this done so we can see some of the benefits, so we truly know what we're after when we come back to the legislature and ask them for additional help.
All right. Thank you, Darren.
And with that, I would ask if you want to, if you want to formally take an action on this, this particular resolution or, or just move on to the next one.
I think just move on to the next one.
I think we should hear them all and then rank them and see where we're at. That's my opinion.
Well, I think we know that we're not going to do this one, so.
Yeah, I'm comfortable not doing this one. So just go pass by it.
Okay.
And go to the next one.
This is one that you're fairly familiar with. It was part of the resolutions that were approved. Last year. Property tax limitation of 3% or CPI, whichever is greater, whereas STCL 101335 limits South Dakota County's ability to raise property taxes year to year to 3% or the rate of the consumer price index, consumer price index, whichever is less. And whereas no limit exists on the increased expense, expenses South Dakota County has faced from one year to the next. And whereas expenses from many counties, particularly in the area of law enforcement, often grow by more than 3% every year. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Resolutions Committee, and the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, be urged to support legislation that would amend STCL 101335 by striking less and inserting more. And again, that's one that you've, you've carried for a couple of years.
Comments on this one? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I obviously would favor this, and I think just because we're allowed to go to whichever one is greater doesn't mean we would have to. And additionally, I think if we'd had this in effect for the last decade, we would not have had to opt out this year.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think, you know, even though we got defeated in committee, one of the comments I heard from a committee member was that this affected a whole bunch of other things. Well, I've seen, I've talked to people since, and nobody can give me an explanation of how it affects school funding and everything else. So I, I think we ought to go after it again. I think it'd be a good idea. You know, we may have the same deal, but one, we got to get, of course, through resolutions. And I think resolutions, some we're going to put a cap on it, because I think that's the only thing that's sellable to the legislature. But we could bring this one in and see what they do with it.
I think we should go forward with it, just, this is what we've been using the last couple of years. I think it's been the most effective, and we've actually gained support by repeating the same one every year. And I think that we just need to continue with this in another year, see where we are. Any additional comments?
Do we need a motion to put this one forward, then? Or are we going to come back later?
If we need a motion, we can go ahead if we're comfortable with that.
I'd make a motion to support this resolution to the SDACC.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. All right, next one.
This is another one that also brought forward last year to provide for the redistribution of money in the alcohol, alcoholic beverage fund. And whereas county governments by statute must provide law enforcement, prosecution, and defense, court, jail detoxification programs, and other related services, and whereas various surveys conducted by sheriffs throughout the state of South Dakota indicate that up to 80% of the inmates in county jails and the court systems are there because of alcohol and drug-related abuse problems. And whereas there is a precedence in, in that counties receive a share of the liquor tax collected by the Department of Revenue up until 1985, now therefore be it resolved, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners be urged to support legislation that would enable counties to share in the distribution of funds from the alcoholic beverage fund collected by the South Dakota Department of Revenue. Be it further resolved, the Minnehaha County Commission urges the South Dakota Department, South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, to support drafting legislation that would distribute 33 and 1/3% of the revenue deposited in the alcoholic beverage fund to counties.
Comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Clearly, we know that a lot of our costs are related to alcohol abuse, and those costs are not spread over the consumers of alcohol, but are in fact spread over homeowners who may or may not drink. I think 35% of the people don't drink at all, and yet they have to pay the cost of prosecution, defense, incarceration of people who do overindulge. And I think that the five guys that I left at the bar ought to pay more instead of my five neighbors who were not involved. And I would hope that as we continue to beat the drum on this type of issue, that we would use the funds raised from the sale of alcohol to mitigate the, the cost to our community of alcohol.
Additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Do you know approximately how much that total fund is? How much it collects?
I do not. I am in the process of working with the Department of Revenue to, to flesh out some additional revenue figures. I, I think we may have somebody in the audience who could, could help us with that figure. Mr. Ken McFarland, no stranger to the resolution process for Minnehaha County, and the SDACC may be able to offer some, some input.
I believe this is the one where the state takes 75% of the collections and municipalities share in 25%. And if I'm not mistaken, the state's share of this is somewhere in the neighborhood between 10 and 1/2 and 11 million dollars for their 75% share statewide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just point out that if they get 11 and 1/2 million, they have a surplus this year of 21 and 1/2 million. Wow. I wonder how that correlates.
Any other comments? I would say I'm personally not in favor of this one, only because we have another alcohol one. And I know there is no support for this with municipalities or the state. They do not want to share their, their funds, and that's already been put out there. And I'm afraid us putting it, put it forward, we're just going to get slapped anyway. And I think we should focus on ones that, that might actually gain some traction, and that's another alcohol-related one where we would raise a tax specifically on drinks. Commissioner Kelly?
These are the resolutions that we're going to send up to SDACC Resolutions Committee, correct?
Correct.
And I, I'm not sure it's a difficult, I'm not sure that having two of them, assuming only one of them will pass, either one of them would give us pretty significant incomes. But, and I, yeah, I agree that, that two won't go through that resolution. I, that would be very unlikely.
Right.
But I do think we need to have options. There, there might, and, and I'm not afraid of the competition. I, you know, the blue badges will be up there, working back and forth, but, and I, you know, the municipalities are in good shape. I'm not concerned about them. I would like to continue, I'd like to pursue this, knowing that it's going to be a very uphill battle. And probably the resolutions would say this is probably a more, the least likely of the two to pass, but I'd still like to take it up there.
Okay. Additional comments? Do we want to have a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to add this to our list of proposals to the state.
Is there a second?
SDACC.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to bring this one, that would be a redistribution of alcohol funds forward. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, aye. Motion passes 4 to 1.
Who's the no?
Me. I told you I was voting no.
This is 180 degrees away from where we were last year.
No, I'm in favor of the next one. I'm not in favor of this one.
One comment, though. I think, you know, even last year, I didn't sense a buy-in from SDACC. I really didn't sense a huge buy-in from the, from the commission. And I think whatever we end up going with, I think we need to be very united in our, in our deal. Otherwise, it's a divide and conquer, and, and we'll lose on that one. So I, I, I mean, I didn't see anybody else wanting to second this, but I do think that's important that once we determine it, we've got to be 100% behind it.
Okay. Next one, Commissioner Kelly.
And this one does, does deal with the sales tax on alcohol. To provide for a 10% increase in the sales tax on alcoholic beverages with a distribution of the increase split between the state and the counties. Whereas county governments by statute must provide law enforcement, prosecution, defense, court, jail detoxification programs, and other related services, and whereas, surveys conducted by the sheriffs throughout the state of South Dakota indicate that up to 80% of the inmates in jails and in court systems are there because of alcohol and drug-related prob, drug-related abuse problems. And whereas, under the current distribution formula for liquor taxes, the counties receive no revenue from the taxing of liquor but bear a disproportionate share of the expenses associated with the abuse of alcohol. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, that the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners be urged to support legislation that would increase the sales tax on alcoholic beverages by 10% to collect at the local level, with said increase split between the state and counties. The county portion of the increase will be allocated based on valuation and population to provide added funding for county law enforcement needs.
Comments on this one?
I would just say ditto to previous things. We, we need to get the cost causers to pick up their share of the costs. And so I would urge, I'll make a motion to urge passage of this one to the next level of scrutiny.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I think we need a little discussion on this. This is, this would be significant. And I, the current state tax is levied at the, at the wholesaler level. And you've got to believe the lobbyists for the liquor industry will be up in arms about this one, because they think it'll reduce their sales. But this is probably the best way to go. You know, I agree with Jeff, when, when we see that 5% of the drinkers consume 50% of the alcohol, why are we putting that burden on all the property taxpayers in the county or the state? So I would encourage this one to be sent forward.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, Commissioners, now we get into four that, that were requested individually by, by Commissioners. I will just jump right into them. And this, this came off of a discussion, I believe it was last week at a, at the commission meeting, deals with TIFs. To provide counties with relief from the impact of discretionary and tax increment finding, financing reductions in property tax base similar to the relief currently provided to school districts. Whereas property taxes are the major source of general fund revenues for South Dakota counties, and whereas, the property tax base and taxable valuation within a county used to calculate, collect, and distribute property taxes has a direct impact on county's ability to provide statutorily required services. And whereas, South Dakota school districts currently have the ability to recover property tax revenues otherwise lost through TIFs and discretionary exemptions approved by the Board of County Commissioners as authorized in STCL 101244. Now therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, that the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners be urged to support legislation that provides counties with the same relief from the impact of TIFs and discretionary exemptions currently afforded to school districts.
Any comments on this? Is there a motion?
Well, Kyle, could we, Kyle, could you step up, please?
Good morning Commissioners, Kyle House, Director of Equalization.
What's the, in Minnehaha County, what's the overall effect on the TIFs for whatever you got, 14 or 13? And what kind of money would we recover? Well, it'd be that same thing. It states in here the same relief to the school districts. I believe the school districts were held harmless, you can probably explain that. But they do get their state funding, and I think that's where they make their dollars up. I'm not sure.
The legislation that was passed, from what I can remember, for the school districts is rather unique in that they did not have a dog in that fight in granting the TIF for the discretionaries. Yet they stood to lose 70% again, out of, out of the general fund. So they had legislation introduced that granted them a whole harmless clause, that whatever they lost, say, this year, they could recover next year in their budget, whatever that amount was, it got added on top of it. So they never suffered a loss. With that being said, I believe Mr. McFarland had put in the budget the loss in taxes, real estate taxes of $52,000. That was only for the tax incremental financing districts, I believe. To add on top of that, the discretionary formulas for Minnehaha County would probably be twice that.
But the discretionary go away in five years, right?
Discretionary goes away in five years. Discretionary goes away in five years, but it also builds on top of itself in that it's self-perpetuating. So it would be double the amount that's lost to the TIF districts. So we're looking at recovering, if we had it in place now, approximately $150,000. It may not seem like a lot, but some counties it is. For us, $150,000 is still some pretty good money. It's just treating us like everyone else who lost out, and that's really what they did with the school districts, a whole harmless.
But isn't the school district, doesn't that affect the local effort and then the state aid?
I believe it's above and beyond. It's a whole harmless. If they lost $100,000, they could, in their general fund, up it by $100,000 next year, and it's not countered against them in the state aid formula or general fund formula.
It's come out of the property tax, then?
Correct. Now, with that being said, there are, I believe, 19 counties that have tax incremental financing districts and 60 counties that have discretionary formulas. So it will affect and have a great impact on quite a few counties within the state.
Can you come to resolutions with me? I don't think I've got a schedule.
At your beck and call.
Maybe you can, maybe you can give me some talking points.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, this is one that I think might be difficult to get through, but I think I do favor it. You know, I don't mind economic development. I would encourage us to find ways to allow business to establish themselves in Minnehaha County. At the same time, this allows the municipalities to basically write a check out of our bank account. And I remember I made the mistake of sending my daughters off to college with their checking accounts backed up by mine. And so money started to disappear from my checking account, and they were having a good time. But that's not the way I prefer it to be. I would, if I think the project is worthwhile, I would be glad to be the one signing on to also contribute as a county. But I think allowing the city to write a check out of our account is not my favorite way.
Are there any comments or is there a motion? Commissioner Bennega?
Well, I have to say that I'm generally in favor of TIFs. The TIFs themselves are an economic tool. It can be used because of the fact that we're always in competition for growth. And growth comes about from not only increases in development-related issues, but the people who move to Sioux Falls spend sales tax dollars and increased home values and all that kind of stuff. The bottom line for TIFs that was started a number of years ago was the fact that anybody that applied for a TIF had to prove that was an economic need to be able to do that so that frankly, the TIF would happen to bring those businesses in. It wasn't just an open book, if you will. And this was, the economic need was supposed to be done by a proven formula and a proven review that said that because of land issues or specific concerns that were going to increase construction costs, that's the reason the TIFs were supposed to be done. I don't know how much of that is being accomplished, frankly. But if the concept is good, it's just the fact that, I'm not sure it's followed to the T, frankly, in the way that it needs to be. And that's the important part, because there is growth and benefit, because the county, if there's TIFs for businesses that come to Sioux Falls, there's also going to be people who move here that are going to, again, build houses and spend sales tax revenue. So the concept is good, but it's going to have, there's going to be a better black-and-white division, if you will, on how those are approved. So I'm not against the concept of TIFs by any stretch, if they're used correctly.
Additional comments? Is there a motion? Thank you, Kyle. Is there a motion to reject or?
I think that this might be a bridge too far in that we should concentrate on a couple of our previous resolutions. So I would make a motion to not send this one forward, but to keep it in the back of our mind.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to withdraw this from our slate of legislation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next one.
We're working through our list. Now I bring forward for your consideration a number of resolutions related to jail costs and potential reimbursements from the state for county jail costs. To provide state reimbursement to counties for jail costs related to inmates convicted of crimes resulting in incarceration in the state penitentiary while housed in county jails prior to transfer. Whereas the state of South Dakota has taken significant steps, including the enactment of Senate Bill 70 in 2013 to reduce the number of inmates and the cost of housing inmates in the Department of Corrections facilities. And whereas county law enforcement activities, including the statutory responsibility to staff and maintain jail facilities, represent significant expenses to county governments. And whereas, an inmate convicted of an offense that results in a penitentiary sentence may wait between six and eight weeks for the completion of a pre-sentence report and placement in the state penitentiary. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Association, be urged to support legislation that provides for the reimbursement of counties by the State Department of Corrections for the cost of housing inmates convicted of crimes resulting in placement in the State Department of Corrections while housed in a county jail awaiting placement in the DOC.
Questions? Comments on this one?
This was one of my thoughts. And, you know, we just recently had a fellow convicted of a sexual offense, and he's awaiting psychosexual evaluation in our jail for some weeks to come, and we're paying for it. He's already been convicted. And staying in our jail is not free. It's certainly free to the state for us to house this individual. And the fact that there's not a person able to do this evaluation on a quicker time schedule isn't the county's fault. In fact, it's the state's fault that they don't have the staff to handle this type of thing. And it, you know, there are others awaiting this background check or a pre-sentence investigation for days or weeks, and they're hanging out in our jail. And we brought this to the attention of the Department of Corrections in the past. I haven't seen any progress on this. And, you know, the fact that I brought this up, I guess, I do think that it's possible our efforts would be better placed towards the alcohol bills or the greater issue. But these are just issues, and so I think, you know, we're still at the point where we should let 1,000 blossoms bloom and figure out which ones we want to bag.
Okay. Any other comments? Are you going to make a motion for this?
I'd like to hear what my fellows think.
I think that we should leave this alone and focus on other things. I know the other one that's out there, we had submitted early on last year, and then our sponsor withdrew, and we withdrew. And I think that we should leave it that way.
Someone want to make a motion on behalf of the chairperson?
Is there any other motion?
If we move on, we just don't.
You don't have to, okay.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve it, just so we can continue the conversation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion to approve it to continue the conversation. Commissioner Bennega?
I don't agree with the fact that we just throw it out and assume everybody's going to ignore it, and there's going to be a change in the direction the sun comes up tomorrow by ignoring it. If we're not going to talk about the hassles that county government has, then regardless of if it's two, three, four, or five, they're all real problems. And for us just to not acknowledge the fact that this isn't the way we can do business forever, I think it's wrong. And frankly, the legislators either need to figure out a different system, because what we have is not the right system in today's economic times. And, you know, their answer is opt-out. Well, I don't think that's the right way to handle it every year either. So for us just to throw it under the rug and say, well, let's forget it, I'm not in favor of doing that.
Other comments? Ken, did you have a comment on any of this? You don't have to if you don't want to.
Commissioner Bender had her head up as well.
Commissioner Bender, did you have a comment? I defer to Ken first, somebody who knows what they're talking about.
Well, with the impact of Senate Bill 70 and the fact that there are still a number of committees that are working on this, on this particular issue, I mean, this, I'm going to tell you, was an extremely sensitive and dividing subject for us in peer last year during session in that, you know, and we do, and this is, and I'm encouraged that the conversation is still ongoing because, you know, before I left, the state had agreed with the legislative summer study to take a look at specifically law enforcement-related costs to the county. So I do believe that conversation is, in fact, going on, and that's an excellent opportunity to have the exact same conversation that you're suggesting that we have. I would encourage you to utilize that format, you know, with the summer study right now, and that to see what does come out of that particular summer study. And hopefully, you'll have a better idea of that prior to convention coming up in September, that if you do need to come back and revisit this, you certainly can. But that forum is specifically set up to deal with law enforcement expenses to the county, and both the issues that Commissioner Barth brought up and you brought up, Commissioner Bennega, about the state cannot ignore these issues, and that because they are real and they are impactful. But I would contend that there is a forum set up right now to specifically address those, and that's with the legislative summer study. And I understand that Carol is already gathering some of the forces together in department heads and other elected officials in order to bring that message forward to the next meeting that's happening rather soon. So. But it was a contentious point last year, and that I think that hurt us legislatively last year in some of our other efforts.
Is there another comment? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I think, you know, every agency that gets involved, whether it's state level or local level, everybody's protecting their money. And it's not a case of DOC and the county sitting down and talking, because they all say, oh, yeah, we recognize your problem, but like Gerald said, they go back to the opt-out. It's unfortunate, and I don't know how you're going to change it, but we need to get, there's a problem. It's going to take more than just one body to solve it. And, but everybody, DOC is going to be in there protecting because this will be money out of their pocket. And they'll, you know, they'll fight it tooth and nail. And that's unfortunate, because I think they ought to be willing to discuss with us.
Commissioner Bennega, did you have a comment?
Well, I think, and my comment is just that I think this makes, from a complete common sense point of view, this makes complete sense. I mean, you're the one that makes the reservation, and you're the one that shows up at the hotel. You expect to pay the bill. And if this is, you know, if the person has been convicted and now the responsibility shifts to another governmental agency, it makes complete common sense that that governmental agency would now be financially responsible. Where I struggle is what is the best format for conveying what seems like a complete common sense approach? But I understand, you know, nobody wants to voluntarily give up money. I mean, that's just the nature of people and the nature of governmental entities. And so I, and, you know, my, like, one of the very first emails I got as a commissioner involved this issue, and it was very strongly worded, and I was very taken off guard because it came from out of nowhere to me. So I understand that there are strong emotions that follow this issue. And I think if there is a, an approach to have a face-to-face and a more, a conversation that is not right in the middle of legislation, but is able to address the bigger picture of the commission, then I'd be willing to give the summer study an opportunity to approach those issues and see what comes out first. Because, you know, you have every legislature, you've got to decide which battles you want to fight and which hill you want to die on. And I'm not sure that if there's another way to approach this issue, that it might not be the hill we want to die on legislatively.
Additional comments? Ken has an additional comment.
Well, one of the things you may want to consider, we have faced a very similar.
Ken, how soon you forget. Now, where do you get to the mic?
We had a very similar issue with juvenile detention costs several years ago. And one of the compromises that counties agreed to back then is that once a child had been adjudicated to the Department of Corrections, and that county was responsible for the first seven days of that continued placement at JDC, to give the DOC enough time to do their work in order to move the child to DOC custody into a DOC alternative placement. I mean, so perhaps as you have that discussion with DOC down the road on the adult side, which may be a similar compromise or resolution could be in the works, is that we agreed to do so many days, but beyond that, it's a DOC cost. And again, it seemed to work well with the juvenile for many, many years. This might be an avenue that we take on this one.
Thank you, Ken.
I completely agree with Ken on that. And I guess I wonder, Commissioner Bennega, if referring this to the summer study might be a better course at this time? Or would you like to continue to push for legislative action? I think, you know, we have decades ahead of us to fight all these battles.
Well, I guess I don't mind wearing the armor, if we need to wear armor once in a while to bring stuff to these kinds of forums. But to me, it's just the principle of the thing, and yeah, you can only die once supposedly. But the real issue is, is that, and we'll talk about this pretty soon, I have no confidence that it's going to go away, nor is it going to be solved if we just ignore it. And I'm not willing to do that. And I think it's sending it to the summer study is somewhat ignoring it, because they've got other issues that they're going to deal with.
I have a motion and a second on the table to move this one forward, dealing with housing county, or he's dealing with incarcerating state penitentiary people at the county with reimbursement. I have a motion and a second to move it forward. Are there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Who were you, Gerald? For or against?
I can die on this hill, too.
Do you want me, do you want to be on the two?
Oh, I voted aye, sorry.
Okay, so two to three. So motion fails. Move that on to the summer study. Next one? Is that the felonies one?
I'm sorry?
Is that the one on the felonies?
Yes.
And another one on a, as you say, on a similar vein. To provide state reimbursement to counties for post-conviction jail expenses related to defendants sentenced to county jails for felony convictions. Whereas the state of South Dakota has taken significant steps, including the enactment of Senate Bill 70 in 2013 to reduce the number of inmates and the cost of housing inmates in the Department of Corrections facilities. And whereas circuit courts in South Dakota have the statutory authority to sentence defendants to county jails for terms up to 365 days. And whereas county law enforcement activities, including the statutory responsibility to staff and maintain jail facilities, represent significant expenses to county governments. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Minnehaha County Board of Commissioners, that the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners be urged to support legislation providing state reimbursement to counties for costs incurred related to the post-conviction housing of inmates sentenced to county jails for felony convictions.
Okay.
Ms. Chair?
Okay. Commissioner Barth?
This is very closely related to the last one. And I would just say that Commissioner Pecus, when Judge Pecus, as commissioner, pointed this out, that, you know, we, well, there was just a case down in Yankton County where a person on their eighth DWI got sentenced to a year in county jail and three years suspended driving or something. And he pointed out that if you're convicted in, say, Bryant, South Dakota, you wind up going to the penitentiary. If you're convicted in Sioux Falls, you go to jail. And the difference is, of course, we get to pay, and Bryant doesn't have to pay. Additionally, the supervision of those folks convicted, if they're in jail, then they're under judicial supervision. If they're in the penitentiary, they're under the Department of Corrections. And again, you know, if it's a state offense that they're convicted of, it seems to me that arresting, prosecuting, defending, incarcerating, our duties should come to an end when they've been convicted of a state crime. That's just the way I feel about it.
Additional comments?
I have a question. A person, I think, would be the one to answer, or Ken. But prior to Senate Bill 70, was there a written policy? Was there a judicial thing that said when they serve in a jail and when they serve in a penitentiary?
Generally, what there is, is there's a statutory sentence called a suspended execution of sentence, which pre-Senate Bill 70 allowed judges to sentence someone guilty of a felony to up to 180 days in the county jail as a condition of suspending more time. So, there was that policy of sentencing to county jails for very low-level felonies. Usually, we're talking about class six felonies, maybe class five. It was left within judicial discretion, pretty much wide open. What's happened since then is there's a concept called presumptive probation that applies to, I believe, felonies up to class four now, that that similar county jail sentence can be imposed in lieu of some offenses that would have been penitentiary sentences probably before. And I think you're seeing that more in the class four, class five felonies that are different, so.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have any additional comment?
Well, we know that, you know, we know why Senate Bill 70 passed, and it had support all over the place. But the thing was, apparently, building a penitentiary is more expensive than a jail, particularly because it costs the state money. And this has been a way of still incarcerating these people, just not putting them in the pen, and in the state facility. So, you know, there's a lot of merit to this, to this one. But again, where's it going to come out of DOC money and follow the money? That's where we're going to have the problem.
Additional comments?
I would still be in favor of doing the same that we did with the past one with this one. I do believe this is valid, that this needs to go somewhere, but I would like to take it to the summer study this yet. And as Ken pointed out, we can still bring it to our September legislative session if we, if it doesn't go anywhere with the summer study. And I believe Carol's gathering data for us, and we would have a little more information going forward. And I think this is important. It's very important.
Any other comments or a motion, or I drop it?
Can you die twice?
Second.
That's my motion.
Motion to move forward and a second to move forward.
Mr. What?
To move that, this one forward. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That's three, two, two again.
Madam Chair, I have another motion, I guess.
Okay.
I would like to bring both of these to the summer study group, the last two that were defeated. So, just brought to their attention. These are unfunded mandates, and they claim to be opposed to those out there in Pierre.
I'm not sure we need a motion, but we can. We don't really need a motion. It's something we will do.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Is there one more, Robert?
Yes.
Well, I would do that by letter, through the chair of the summer study, or how is your?
Aren't we going to be present? I think we're going to be present.
I think we're going to be present.
Well, to the second one. The first one is the 19th and 20th of August.
That's when I'll be there.
You'll be at that one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And the resolutions is?
That's the 21st.
21st?
I think.
All right, Robert, last one.
And the last one is one that I think was introduced, thinking the intent was to bring it to SDACC when, upon further discussion, I'm not sure that truly was the intent, to provide for an independent review of the structure of local governments in South Dakota. And I would leave that as a comment or a?
I'll die for the third time. I feel very strongly with a sense that frankly, the state's not going to give up any revenue sources or redistribute at this point. The city's already supported our need for support, but it's not going to give it from any of their resources. The way we do business currently, and the growth that we've had in public safety-related issues, is a train wreck. At some point, we're going to have to take, quote, "local control" of what we need to do ourselves. We do business different than probably 60 or 62 counties in the state. There's three to five of us that have different issues. And at some point, we're going to have to sit down and talk about whether this is the right form of government, frankly. And secondly, what needs to happen is, I think we need to give this to an independent group, rather than giving it to a government group, to come up with the answers. Because right now, all we're doing is beating the same horse, and this horse has died many times. So, it doesn't probably belong in the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. The timing's probably not right, but at some point, reality's going to have to hit, and the vision for how we do business has got to change. That's all I'll say.
Additional comments?
I agree 100% that there are 66 counties, they each have one vote. We've got more people in our neighborhood than Minnehaha County has in the entire county. And so, but the top five, I would say, probably are 65 to 70% of the population, if not more. So, it's going to take those counties, Minnehaha, Pennington, Yankton, Brown, to get together and start formulating this thing. It would, it could take several years, but it is something that should go forth. And I don't think the association is the place to do it because of this imbalance on voting.
Did you have a different suggestion?
Right now? No, somebody's got to take this horse and kick it. Got rodeo on my mind.
I think there's a timing issue, and there's also, there's also a issue with where it goes. So, I think we, I'll withdraw this for now, but I'm not going to just let it go, because I firmly believe that this needs to be addressed.
I'll agree with that.
Madam Chair, you know, honestly, Gerald, I completely agree with you. And Kermit Stakers teaches a class on government, and I've asked him to suggest that, you know, give his class the assignment of how to design government, and see what they come up with. And, you know, they might come up with three or four ideas that none of us have conceived of, that we should look into. And I just thank you for these ideas.
Any other comments?
Commissioners, I would just say that based on your, on your actions of these resolutions before you today, we will provide these to the association, along with a copy of the meeting minutes. And that will be notification of your authorization of a number of these resolutions, to submit them for consideration by the Resolutions Committee, as part of the platform, to be considered by the full association membership in September.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just make another comment about this, because
Commissioner Barth?
As we, as we go forward and try to work with our legislators, we have to do it in good faith, and using our political capital of being nice people and everything. Our other people involved in working the legislature actually give them money. You know, the beverage people give them money, the auto dealership people give them money, I'm sure the state bar gives them money, the farm people give them money, the hospitals give them money. The county commissioners don't give them any money. And so, the only way that we can have an effect is to, in good faith, work with them. And it, it puts us a bit in the hole, though, compared when we go up against somebody that, that is handing over reelection checks to some of these legislators. I think Commissioner Kelly, when he was running for reelection one year, his opponent spent over $100,000. Of course, none of those people contributing to that person expected anything in return. But in general, we don't have that kind of money to spread over the, our friends in the legislature. And so, it's more difficult for us and for our lobbyists to have an influence on the operation than for others. And we have to keep that in mind as we fight on here.
That was not on the commission election.
No, that was not.
With that being said, we will move on to item number 17, the Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Okay. Now, item number 18 is new business. Is there any new business? Item number 19 is old business. Is there any old business? I look for a motion to adjourn it to executive session.
You can make an announcement.
Old business, sorry.
Mark Lee with the Chamber of Commerce, just learned, although I was paying rapt attention to all of your discussions, I just learned via email that there is a press conference that's going to be held at the Washington Square site at 1:00 today by the city development office to talk about that project. So, it came up in your discussions today as to what type of deal might have been cut. Remind you of something you'll learn at 1:00 today if interested, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will go into executive session for personnel litigation. Is there a motion?
It's my motion.
Second. Motion and second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.